Okay, welcome back. We are here for a live city council regular meeting of October 19th. Do you want to go over the rules of the meeting first? No?
Which rules were you looking at? This is a social distance meeting. While you're sitting, you are free to remove your mask. We ask that anytime you get up from your seat that you put your masks back on, including when you come up to the podium for any public comments, you'll be asked to keep your mask on. We do have hand sanitizer and sanitary wipes to wipe off the microphone if you'd like before you start speaking.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
We have Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chirko.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrand.
Here.
Please rise and join Dean in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay seated for the vacation.
Please join me in renewal of our pledge to the flag, the greatest country on this earth. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, please guide us during these tumultuous times, and if it is all possible, on November 3rd, please let us have a clear winter and let the country move on safely.
If I could ask Blair Petrini to come up first? Alex, would you like to guys coming?
...............................................................................................................................................................................................................
We just want to thank you so much on behalf of Grateful Hearts and this team here, obviously, it's an amazing team and without them, I'd be probably in a corner mumbling, pulling my hair out. And so, I honor them for all their hard work, day in and day out, to serve those who are in need. And we all know that those numbers, we have gone from distributing approximately 4,500 meals a month to, since COVID, jumping up to between 95 and 9,500 and 10,000 meals each month. And so, we see the newly vulnerable and we are just so thankful for the support of our city that we could continue to keep our doors open to help those in need. So, thank you so much for this. It's really a blessing.
You get everybody? Wait, wait, Blair. You need us closer together? All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Manny, could you join us, please? This man does more trash talking than anybody I know and he gets paid for it. So, congratulations. Manny Gavilla is the Municipal Relationship Manager, dedicated to serving the solid waste and recycling needs of Los Alamos and many other cities in this area. Manny is very active in the community, serves on the Board of Directors for the Los Alamos Seal Beach and Long Beach Chamber of Commerce. During his tenure in Los Alamos, Manny has volunteered and supported many of the city's programs and events, including the Annual Race on the Base, Fourth of July, National Night Out, and Winter Wonderland. Manny, we've been honored by the guys here on the Parks Department.
No. Ever since I came into Los Alamos about three years ago, I have been embraced and welcomed with open arms, and it has been my absolute pleasure to serve this community in the city. And on behalf of Republic Services, I cannot be more grateful for our partnership and our long-term friendship here. And just thank you for everything. It is my honor to serve this town.
I just basically like how you worked in Grateful after following Grateful Hearts. That's very, very good. Thank you. One more? Yeah, right.
Smile with your eyes.
Sticking my tongue out at you almost. Thank you.
I don't know what the rules are now.
Congratulations.
Thanks, guys. If I could ask Warren Di Los Angeles to join us, please? This week is Small Business Saturday, and Warren has been selected to represent the city of Los Alamos in this particularly trying time of COVID-19. We recognize that small business are a leading part of our local economy, and these businesses have been through difficult times this year and ask our community to support the places you love by shopping at our small stores and restaurants with a special emphasis on doing it this week. Tribe Fitness, owned by Warren, is a picture-perfect example of the small business community in Los Alamos. The city of Los Alamos would like to recognize Tribe Fitness as representatives of the small businesses owners of Los Alamos to exemplify the dedication and love that goes into creating our neighborhood of favorites.
Thank you, guys. Well, thank you, guys, for honoring us. I'm definitely humbled and blessed to be part of this community. When we came here five years ago, it's definitely been a blessing and an honor to work with lots of people in the city. I definitely see the benefit of being in the city and being able to work closely with a lot of the city employees. We've done a couple challenges with them for the city employees, and then we also did something for the Race on the Base. And, you know, I just, I'm definitely blessed and I thank you, guys, for honoring us. And I also wanted to say, I'm definitely in favor of Measure Y, and I hope everybody goes out there and votes because I think what the city offers through its city employees is a big benefit to the city of Los Alamos. And I think it's one of those things that you take for granted that it's there, but when it's God, you'll definitely miss it. So...
Thank you. Thank you. See Chet for your check on the way out? Thank you. You're good? Thank you.
I've been asked to come in tonight to provide a quick update for our COVID response and our status within the city and the counties. So, this first slide here, what I'm going to focus on is the two metrics that the state's using to advance us through the tier process. You know, we're currently in Tier Two. We moved into Tier Two early in September, and we're working hard and getting our numbers better, and hopefully we could be advancing to the next tier, which is the Orange Tier shortly. The two metrics that the state uses is the case count and also the positivity rate. So, the case count, right now in Orange County, we're looking at about, these numbers are as of today, we're about 57,000 cumulative cases. The way the state's looking at it is a seven-day average, and they want the seven-day average to reflect 4.6, excuse me, 3.9 or less per 100,000 residents. Right now, we're currently at 4.6, so we've been holding steady there for a while. It's been kind of bouncing up and down for the past four or five days at that number. So, that's the one that we really need to work to, work hard in the county to get down, so we can advance through the tiers. The other metric that they use is the positivity rate. You can see on this slide here that the positivity rate currently in Orange County is 3.5. To advance to the next metric, or to the next tier, we need to be less than five. So, of the two metrics that the state uses, the Orange County is below on one of them and above on the other. So, the one that the county is focusing on right now is trying to get that case count down. Oh, another point, another point I have here is just the current hospitalization rate. Currently, the hospitalization rate in Orange County, we're looking at about 164 in the hospital and 66 in ICU. And as a point of reference, back in July, when we had our big spike in Orange County in Southern California, we were well over 500 hospitalizations and 66 in ICU. And what's important about that is, back then, our average hospital stay was about 15 days, and since back in July to now, the hospitalization rate, the time in the hospital has dropped to about 11 days. So, that's where they feel comfortable that we're going to be able to absorb this next step. So, what I put this slide up for, it's the dashboard from Orange County Healthcare Agency. This is one of the main resources we use as we help prepare either the hospitals or some of our local skilled nursing facilities or assisted living facilities. The main metrics we look at are the daily COVID positive case. If you see, that's 203. Those numbers are from today. So, there's 203 new cases reported today. We know historically speaking that in the next seven to 14 days, about 10% of those will end up in the hospital. So, that's where it's very important that we, the medical field has reduced that hospital stay. So, more people will be gone by the time these people come in. And that's, again, that's what gives the Orange County Healthcare Agency the confidence to be, to feel like we could absorb any further uptick. The next slide is the, this one focuses more on the city. This is the city's COVID status. As of today, we have 218 cases cumulatively. That's 218 from the onset, from the very ago. It spiked up through July, it flattened out for a bit, and now we're kind of slowly on a rise. It's a little slow burn. It's still out there, and they're adding a few, seems like every day we're adding a couple here and there. Of the 218 cases in the county, the city, 101 are, as a result, live at the skilled nursing facility in the city. Of those 218, there's been 23 deaths. So, the previous slide, using the previous slide in mind, it should be important to extract that the community spread is still occurring in Los Alamos. We've had two outbreaks in the skilled nursing facility. So, it's definitely still present. It looks like it's coming back a little bit. Not like July numbers, but it's still, it's not cooling down like it was in August and September. Orange County Healthcare Agency is optimistic that we're better prepared for this new spike for those reasons I stated earlier. Hospital stays are coming down, they treat it better, and the hospitals all have surge capacity. If the numbers start to spike up again, they can do that and significantly increase our bed capacity. So, the fact that the community spread's still here and that it's local in the city, it's just important to maintain precautions by wearing our masks, washing our hands, and practicing social distance when possible. The local response is just what we've done in the city here internally, and then I have some what we've done with the community. But in response for the outbreak, we had to prepare in ways that were unique, and that is by making sure we had enough PPE for typically disciplines that don't use PPE. We have over 1,000 surgical masks, so we have over 500 N95 masks, and we have an ample supply of gloves, eye protection, gowns, and sanitizers. Our burn rates suggest that we should be, we should be able to ride this out at least through late January if the burn rate continues. The only thing that's a little bit, we're burning a little bit quicker than the rest, are the surgical masks. And this morning, we made a request to Orange County Healthcare Agency for another 500, and that would get us through. The supply chain that we're using is the same supply chains that our businesses are using in the field. They're looking for donations. And I got to tell you, at the beginning of this outbreak, it was very hard to get masks, surgical masks, handmade masks, gloves, everything else. And the community really came through. We had people just dropping off boxes of masks that were handmade, and it really helped us tide it over till we were able to get our masks in place. The second one is the vendors. We use local vendors to establish ones and newly established vendors to acquire the PPE. Again, they were backordered at the very beginning for the first few months, and so that's when the Orange County Healthcare Agency came through and provided quite a bit of PPE for us through the, through today. Continuing, continuing saying internally, some of the things that we have in place internally is there's a mask mandate. All our employees are asked to wear it when they're dealing with the public or away from our work area to be wearing a mask, even when we're just walking down the halls or in common areas. Only time that we've asked them to take them off is if they're eating or drinking, obviously. But it's something that we've employed internally and they're respecting it. We've established sanitary guidelines, providing hand sanitizers and germicidal wipes in all our common areas, and then also testing availability. We've, myself and Chelsea, we've established a streamlined process for first responders, essential workers, and the non-essential workers, and the volunteers. And depending on the circumstances, we have three different options, and we'll take, going down one of those three different options, whichever one fits the best. But we're doing really good lately of getting the results back in less than 48 hours. In some cases, that's the 24 hours, which wasn't the case in the beginning when it was taking 11 or 12 days to get the results, which was very challenging. And the community. So, in the community, we've utilized social media and city websites to provide updates. Some of those updates are things that, the directives that we receive from the CDC, from CDPH and the Orange County Healthcare Agency. We also, you know, distribute stuff, what we're doing with cooling centers during those last two heat waves during COVID. So, we've also been available to assist businesses with PPE procurement. We've had at least two local businesses to gather masks and gowns and germicidal wipes for them. When they had, lost their vendor or their vendor had backordered them, we were able to procure them from the healthcare agency. Also, what we're going to do is we're preparing for potential point-of-distribution with a flu clinic and potentially a vaccine clinic. So, the flu clinic that we have planned is, we're working with Orange County Healthcare Agency and Western College to offer the flu shots to not only the community but to our city employees. So, we're going to, looking at a one-day flu clinic where the nursing students from the college will be administering the shots. Orange County Healthcare Agency will be providing the vaccines and the materials to administer the shots. And then, for logistic purposes, we'll have the cert members in our city staff helping out to get that done. We're hoping a drive-through will work and we have in three lanes and just be able to process people as quickly as possible. And then, on this slide, I just wanted to touch on our cost recovery efforts that we were going through. There's two primary cost recovery portals. One of them is FEMA, and the other one is the state. The FEMA one is, in my past life, I had experience dealing with FEMA, but it's a little bit different when every state, every county, and every city is asking for the same cost recovery. So, the ball's moving. It's just moving a little slower than we're used to when we're only dealing with, you know, one major incident at a time. What FEMA does is they'll take, they asked us to submit to them first. They'll determine how much they're going to reimburse us for, and then that, whatever they don't reimburse or the part that's, that they come up short, we are going to submit to CalOAS and try to secure more funding that way. Then there's grant funding, the primary one, obviously. I know you're well aware of is the CARES Act funding, and that one's been pretty helpful to tide us over till we get through the FEMA response. And then, lastly, I just wanted to throw this in. You know, with the recent surges of new cases globally, I'm sure you've been aware of them, but they're talking about lockdowns in Europe. With the recent surge of new cases nationally, we have a couple states that are, that are just growing exponentially, and most states are growing in numbers. And then, the recent surge of new cases that are statewide, I think it's imperative to maintain that we still practice all those precautions, the mask wearing like we're doing now, this hand washing and all that, because right now, our numbers are holding steady. Everybody around us is going up. We're holding steady, and if we can do even better and bring it down, we're not that far away from being into the next tier. That concludes my report. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Dean?
Over the weekend, Orange County Health released some figures, of course, I'm, I mean, there we go, released some figures that were published, I believe, in the, in the Orange County Register, which shows pretty much the same thing you said. Cases between September 15th, or September 16th and October 15th for Los Alamos was 58. I think you said a little bit less than that. It also shows the total number of cases during that period of 217. But where folks have reacted is that they show a cases per 10,000 residents in the past 30 days, and it shows for Los Alamos 49.5. And when you look at the map, it looks like we're a huge hotspot. The only one higher than us is Silverado Canyon with 49.8. And the part that folks have to understand with numbers is that we're a city of 11,500. So, cases per 10,000 is going to be almost one-for-one when they use that type of ratio. We're not really a hotspot, but using the metrics that the county uses, it makes us look like we're not doing anything. And we have one healthcare facility, actually, I think there's two in the city, that have had breakouts, if you will, and that skews the same thing. We're no different than most cities. It's just we're a small city. And the end result is these numbers look bad. And, you know, they made some headlines that Los Alamos is the hotspot in Orange County. Yeah, we're not, but yes, we are. It's, numbers can do anything. I used to make a comment that statisticians believe if you put your feet in a bucket of water, ice water, and stick your head in an oven, on the average, you feel pretty good. So, this is the same kind of statistics. It can be looked at any number of ways. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a really, a very valid point, and I talked to the healthcare agency today, and they're well aware that that cluster is from one facility, and it's not indicative of the city as a whole. But that doesn't stop certain entities from leveraging it.
Average readers and citizens that look at this, however, see it totally different.
Right. And that's, we've been taking a few phone calls over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else? Thank you very much. We'll move on to oral communications. We actually have a card for oral communications from Dr. Jody Rubanos, who is here today to speak about safe routes to schools and a transportation meeting being held this Thursday, that they would like your input. If Dr. Rubanos looks familiar, she's also a candidate area two of the Los Alamos Unified School Board.
Well, thank you for that endorsement, Mayor Murphy. I am Jody Rubanos, and I am part of the PTA, and it's so wonderful to see so many PTA members here in this room. I did want to bring to your attention two things. One is regarding safe routes to school, and instead of me going through all of the many things that our schools have been doing regarding safe routes to school, I submitted it to Wendy, so it'd be part of the record. And that includes a video of Member Hasselbrand that was featured on Los Al TV. We do have very healthy safe routes to school. This year, we didn't have a Walk to School Day, though, because, obviously, of COVID. We celebrated it virtually. So, that has been submitted for the records, and I have some pictures that we took. The other piece that I want to talk to you about, and I'm really talking to the choir here, you are already aware of the importance of Los Alamos as a city being responsible for all of our school districts' secondary students. You house Oak Middle School, McCullough Middle School, and all of our students at the high school, go to Los Alamos High School. And I know you're very well aware of the importance of traffic safety. I'm also aware that the city has applied for pedestrian safety grants in the past, and probably for other reasons, too. The grant has not been successful because of not as much community participation. I wanted to use this forum to encourage participation and encourage you to encourage others to participate in community input in the Active Transportation Plan. The deadline's really coming up. Unfortunately, the grant for conducting this study runs out in the next few months. And data gathering, which we normally would do partially from walking audits, from people actually observing where all the hot areas are, are not going to be very effective because we're in a hybrid situation. And in fact, many of our students are doing the Los Al at home, so they're not even going to school. So, that makes it even more important for people who are familiar with traffic area issues to have input. And I just want to say that the first place that you can input, and you'll be able to do that for the next month or so, is going to Los Alamos City website, clicking on Active Transportation, and identifying areas on the interactive map. Now, I realize the map says Long Beach, but that's not our fault. That is the fault of the map makers. It is Los Alamos, and identify where the problem areas are. The other is there's a Zoom meeting this Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:00, and it's just a great opportunity for people who are really in the know, some experts, to talk with community members about concerns that they have. So, in closing, I just want to say, Los Al, thank you so much for bringing Active Transportation to the forefront. It's so important for our students. And as a parent of students who just graduated from the high school, I think my kids were better drivers because they biked and walked to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on to council announcements. Dean, would you lead off?
Sure. I've had some activity since our last meeting. I conducted the late September Regional Military Affairs Committee over at the Joint Forces Training Base. Those are being held in person with social distancing and face masks. I also participated in the OCOG meeting on September the 24th, and participated, and participating tomorrow is the last day for this, of the Military Summit that's put on by the American Defense Communities. It's been strange this year because normally we meet and have speakers and different breakout sessions. What they've done this year is the breakout sessions are being done online, and they're not on the same day. So, we have to re-register each day that the summit is coming up, and the one coming up tomorrow deals with the Army. On September 26th, along with Councilmember Dobie, I attended the Change of Command for the 79th Theater Sustainment Command over at the Joint Forces Training Base. I participated in a League Policy Meeting, which was held last week prior to the three-week, I'm sorry, the three-day virtual conference that's coming up for the League of California Cities, October 7th through 9th. You'll recall at our last meeting, you guys gave me directions on how to vote on that particular measure, and that's now been through the Policy Committee that I sit on, and it's also been through the Public Safety Policy Committee, and there'll be recommendations on that at the closing session. I won't talk too much about this. I'll let Shelley deal with it, but I was able to attend the press conference over at Joint Forces Training Base for the new Hella Tanker. And Shelley, I know you'll give more detail on it, so I won't go beyond that. I've been participating continually in the White House local elected officials' briefings. They've gone out once every two weeks, and during this period, I attended the briefing on October, I'm sorry, September 30th and October 14th. I have participated in a SCAG meeting on October 1st. That was a relatively quick meeting, but I've worked out with city staff where reports from the SCAG meetings are now being circulated to the cities that I represent on the regional council, and also hopefully to my colleagues here in the city council. Last, I participated in a ballot major explanation program that was done by Orange County TACS. That's a group in Orange County that is very engaged with Howard Jarvis, and talked primarily about prop- and talked primarily about Proposition Fifteen. But it was a, a good learning experience just to hear through each of the initiatives again and determine what each one will do from the standpoint of the community. And it's like every year at election time, the commercials occur on the air, and a lot of money is being spent on trying to sway people's minds with inaccurate, inaccurate facts, basically, or inaccurate information. But I encourage everybody, when they vote, to make sure they go through and research the different propositions and, and choose their decision in the process. And then the city also has one on the ballot. Folks aren't voting because they're not happy with the top end of the ballot, and they don't know what to do. Please don't throw away your ballot and figure it's not worth voting. The city measures and the city council races are on the bottom end of the ballot. So if you don't want to vote in the top end, please look at the bottom end of the ballot and make your voice heard from the standpoint of a local area. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Tanya?
So I also, you mentioned that the helitanker debut, y'all, that was awesome. And I'm not going to say more than that, but it was a sight in the capability and what they said they're able to do now, issue. I was just happy to be in the audience. I've attended a few Human Relations Committee meetings. They're like in the middle of the week, so I oftentimes forgive me, I forget to say that I do attend, but I do attend, and it's really kind of cool because there are different vested entities from, I mean, we have a sheriff that's on there, and then there's a rabbi, then there's some attorneys. There's always this variant group of people that are interested in human relations across Orange County. So it's really like kind of a group think tank, like, how do we impact these communities? How do we be the good out there? So that's been kind of fulfilling as well. And the big thing that I want to share with y'all is these vector meetings that I've been going, telling you to want on the fifteenth. And I've been encouraged to encourage everyone, we have to take more precautions with our mosquitoes. I say their hours because they're not going anywhere until the weather changes. But they are most active at dusk and dawn. Please wear your mosquito repellent. Please look for, in the, oh, you threw me a sign out of school. Wear your mosquito repellent. They are most active from dusk to dawn. That's when they're really out there trying to eat you. And West Nile virus is in the City of Los Alameda's, so just be mindful of, they're not just annoying, they can be kind of dangerous as well. And the vectors committee has released a science kit, it's a STEM kit, that we're, well, as soon as I can get my email to send it to Wendy, there'll be a link to our website, the city's website. And then we also have, they have a video. It's kind of fun, it's like a movie, but it's a video, and it's very informational. I would encourage anyone that's got some questions about these eighties mosquitoes and what they're doing and how to protect yourself. It's like a two-minute video, and it's super informative, but the best thing is keep an eye on any standing water. These rascals can live in your house. So it's not just, oh, I'm safe, I didn't go outside. No, they can live in your home, they can, they're like roaches. They can live off of a drop of water. Their eggs can lay dormant for a few years until conditions present themselves, and then they can hatch, and then they can eat you. So just to be mindful about that. And then I'm going to end with something happy, now that I've told you all about the mosquitoes. The last event that I went to was Coffee with a Cop. It was at the bakery, there's actually another one on the twenty-eighth, and I will be going to that one as well. And it's just really cool seeing the officers serve and smile. It's not often that they get to actually have a smile on their face when they're out and they're with the public, and, but they were giving coffee, and they were giving bagels, and it was a nice time. So I would encourage anyone, you want to know about our local law enforcement, head on out on the twenty-eighth, and I'm sure the chief will say where it is, because I forget where it is, but I get someone that puts it in my personal calendar. So I just have to be available the twenty-eighth. And that's it.
Thank you, Shelly.
All right. So there's this helitanker going, rumor going around. This has been a work over a year in the process. It started with, back up to the Paradise Fire and some of the, the blame that PG&E had for contributing to the fire with downed power lines and things like that. So Edison came up with a plan as kind of a proactive thing, and they gave OCFA a two-million-dollar grant to get this supertanker, which was great, but we had no place to house it. Right now, we have four OCFA helicopters, they're housed at Fullerton Airport. It's a small airport, this is a very, very large helicopter. So I had connected our fire chief, Brian Fenestry, with, at the time, Colonel Dusich over at the base. And I had made contact with General Baldwin and said, hey, if we can't keep this at Fullerton Airport, can we have JFTB as a Plan B? And he said, absolutely, but it better be a Plan A, I want that at my base. Okay. So connected the, the military and the fire department together, and they made it happen. The, the demonstration that they had out there, our normal helicopters hold three-hundred-and-fifty gallons. This supertanker holds thirty-four-hundred gallons. It's got a telescopic snorkel that can go over and hover over any body of water, and I believe it fills up five-hundred gallons a minute. Am I being really aggressive? Okay, good. So it's real quick, it can do fire retardant, it can do water, it can fly at night. So it's got a lot of capabilities. They talked about one fire that we had in Orange County, down in South County, and because the helitanker was used, it was confined to ten acres. If they weren't able to use that, it would absolutely jump one of the toll roads and probably was in the path of about thirty-four thousand residents. So this is a big deal. It's going to be housed at the base, we've got a building there and everything. They've just been absolutely amazing. The CEO of Edison was there, who happens to be a Huntington Beach guy, so he was local. And it came out, and they just did this wonderful drop of water, and we all got a little splash from it, and we were pretty far away. It, it was great for me. I told at the press conference, this was my three-year-olds colliding. As board chair, I was able to speak at the press conference and welcome everybody to my city and also my base. So it was really well-attended, there was tons of media there. And it's just, it's a real feather in OCFA's cap for being able to do that. And I just want to thank the base so much for doing this in a record speed for very little money. And we have this home for this unbelievable supertanker now. It's the only one in North America, and it's going to be helping all throughout California. Once it goes out of county, we get reimbursed for any cost. It costs, I think, seventy-eight-hundred dollars an hour to fly, I believe was the case. I'm looking over at Ron. If you agree with me, that's right, because nobody's going to check it anyway, so we're good. But it's incredibly expensive, but for, for what it does and the timing that it does, it's just a great resource that we have that we're able to share with the rest of the state. So that was great. Other than that, lots of Zoom meetings, and I just want to end on a high note with OCFA.
Thank you. Mostly my meetings at this time are, are mayor's meetings, and the main topic is Reno. We're going to get into Reno later today. Let me stop for a second and let Mark speak.
Right. It's all right, you're, you're the mayor, you can go in whatever order you want. Similar to Councilmember Hassel, or Dobie, I attended Coffee with our Cops at the Fifth Avenue Bakery. It was a very nice event, really nice to spend time with the individuals that keep our city safe. Even if I did have to spend time with the chief there, it was, that's okay. There will be another Coffee with the Cop, as Councilmember Dobie mentioned. And it's really nice to see, I mean, this is a unique experience in our small city. You know, this is one of the nice things about having a small city with a police department, is you can go to the local coffee shop, you can get to know your police officers, and then when your police officers are patrolling your neighborhood, they'll remember you. I mean, we're not a city of a million people, or two million people, or even five-hundred thousand people. We're a nice, small city, and it's, it's sort of that Mayberry feel that we have here. And, and, you know, I see officers driving in my neighborhood all the time, and my neighbors always talk about how nice it is that they recognize their police officers. And so I would encourage everybody, if nothing else, it's free coffee on October twenty-eighth. So that's going to be at Donut Hut on Cotella. I also attended a couple of Measure Y informational meetings. Measure Y, I know there's a lot of talk about Measure Y right now. There's a lot of talk on Nextdoor about Measure Y. And what I would say is the same thing that Councilmember Gross said, which is, before you vote, you know, actually do research yourself. Don't rely on what, you know, people are randomly telling you or what you're seeing posted on social media. You know, everybody's got an opinion and an agenda. You need to look into things yourself so that you can make the, the best decision that you can, most informed decision that you can for yourself and for, in the case of Measure Y, for your city. There are two more informational meetings this week, I plan to be at both. Tomorrow, Tuesday, at five-thirty PM, there's going to be a Measure Y informational meeting at Little Cottonwood Park. Again, anyone who wants to learn about Measure Y, you'll have at least one council member there. You'll probably have the city manager there, chief of police there, our fiscal sustainability manager there. You, you can ask all the questions you want there, get all the answers you want, debate all you want. Really try finding a situation like that with any of the propositions. So I really do encourage people to go tomorrow or go on Thursday at the community center, in the park at the community center, also at five-thirty PM. Again, I plan on being there, and we're going to have multiple folks from the city there that can give you the actual facts without opinion about the city's fiscal position, the city's fiscal history, what the state of California has done to the city, and to all cities in California, some of our, our costs, some of our, you know, all of the things that we've analyzed on the Budget Standing Committee, as a city council, as city staff, to try to avoid taking action like this, Measure Y. Nobody likes increasing taxes, but, but, you know, what, what I think you'll learn, at least this is my position, what I think you'll learn is that the city has done everything that it can over the years. The Budget Standing Committee has done everything they can, city staff has done everything they can to avoid something like this. But, but more importantly, everything that we're doing now is to try to keep Los Alameda's as it is, the wonderful city that, that it is, you know, the, the safe city that it is, the, the city with a sense of community that it has. And this all factors into that. This is not, you know, some ploy, Measure Y is not some ploy by the city council to try to collect money for some projects. There are no big projects planned, there's no plan for a new city hall, there's no plan for a new community center. Come check out the community center, it, it needs a lot of work. But what we're trying to do with Measure Y is essentially keep the city going as it has been and keep it going as a city that we all love so much. So I know we're going to talk about Measure Y a little bit more, so hopefully my colleagues will forgive me for, for going into this, but I, I do think it is so critical. And, and again, I hope folks come out to the two meetings this week. This Thursday, there's going to be an Orange County Public Library Advisory Board Meeting via Zoom. This is going to be the first one in a while. And I just want to remind everyone that the Orange County Public Library is open. I've been checking out books for my kids. Essentially, you, you reserve books, and then you get an email which tells you that the books are available. You drive to the library, you call the phone number, and they bring the books out and place them on a table for you. It's very convenient, so I would encourage folks to check that out. And importantly, I voted, dropped off my ballot in the mailbox. Make sure you vote, and again, make sure you do all your research on everything you're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We all want it.
As the staff suggests, and knows well, I'm getting out just before the dementia sets in. It's good timing. As I was saying before Mark so rudely interrupted me, most of my calls in the last month have been regarding, mayor calls regarding Reno, and the, we're going to talk about that also later, so I won't beat it to death now, but you, just to let you know, the mayors across the county are very upset. To pile on everybody else, personal note, please, please vote. Even if you don't vote for the stuff I'm for, vote. Nothing is more important. When I see people in Poland, countries that get to vote, and they stand in line for three days, and we can't find a half an hour in, in a, in a month to vote, it's discouraging. Dean mentioned, you know, the city and the council people and Measure Y are all at the bottom of the ballot. And so if you, if you feel that this state is so one-sided, your vote doesn't matter, maybe true at the top of the ballot, but at the bottom of the ballot, Dean and I have run together and against each other at the same time twice, twenty-twelve and twenty-sixteen. Both times on a citywide election, we were within a hundred votes. I think the last time we were in the low eighties, the difference between us. That is, that is citywide, now we're five districts. That, that means that that eighty, you divide it by five, we are down to where a big family of votes could sway the election. So it's really, really a chance at this point that that one vote does actually make the difference. And can't stress enough that to, to get out there, do your research and, and get out there and vote, please. Okay, we'll go on to the warrants. May I have a motion for the warrants?
I'll move.
A second.
A roll call, please.
A roll call, Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirko.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you skipped item number eight, items from the city manager.
Oh, that wasn't, that was intentional. And I would never interrupt you. So I mean, it's. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, sir. Just a quick couple of announcements with regards to. Just a couple of quick announcements. I'm actually going to hand it off to our acting Recreation Director to talk about some upcoming city events, and then also to our Development Services Director to talk a little bit about the Active Transportation Forum that was mentioned earlier, and then also some comments from the chief about the Coffee with a Cop, so.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. We have a busy October planned for the community. We kicked off last Friday with the Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital of Long Beach Drive-Up Film and Food, Food Fest series. And these are select two Fridays every month until December. And we were actually sold out. The movie and food trucks event takes place at Los Alameda's Youth Baseball Parking Lot on Farquhar. We are sold out for the October thirtieth, which is Hocus Pocus, but we do have other movies, events in November and December that are still available on Eventbrite. And everything I'm talking about today, tonight, is available on cityoflosalamitos.org. Our upcoming this Saturday is our popular drive-through trunk-or-treat, also sponsored by Memorial Care. The event, as you typically are familiar with, used to take place at Little Cottonwood Park, but due to COVID-nineteen, we had to modify the event. And it's now taking place where Winter Wonderland takes place normally, on Pine Street. And it is a drive-through event. We have about twenty-six trunks, all ready to go, ready for all the families. And the reservations are sold out for this event, but we are very much looking forward to it. Following that, we have October twenty-seventh, our First Annual Halloween Decorating Contest. And we're encouraging the community to decorate their homes. They will be automatically judged by our Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Commissioners. So each neighborhood, hopefully, if everybody brings out their decorations, will have a first and second place winner for each neighborhood. It's similar ran to the Holiday Decorating Contest, and they'll get the signs and everything outside of their home. We also have Escape Los Al here at the community center. I encourage you all to check it out. And the reservations are up to six people. The room will be sanitized in between every use, and we are already getting multiple calls for Escape Los Al. It's based on the movie Hocus Pocus, just as a hint. And finally, we have Alternatives to Trick-or-Treating Spooky Egg Hunt Kits for donation-based that benefits our scholarship fund for the Recreation Department. Thank you.
May I just say, Emmeline, that, you know, in the city star for recreation, we admire your imagination and ingenuity to keep all these events going. Really phenomenal job, thank you.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. I just want to, we did have a guest speaker, but I just want to emphasize our Active Transportation Plan, the ATP. So the City of Los Alameda's has contracted out with a contracted vendor to do this survey to make the quality of life in Los Alameda's better through a more bike-friendly, more pedestrian-friendly for our residents and people traveling to school, people taking the public transit. So our actually second community workshop will be held via Zoom, October twenty-first, at, from five-thirty, it begins at five-thirty PM, and you can go to the city's website to get that link. And we also have a website where residents and whoever travels through Los Alameda's can provide feedback on their opinions on bike path, walk path, routes to school, et cetera. So I urge the community to get involved. This is your chance to voice your concerns, if you have any, about making sure that Los Alameda's is more bike-friendly, walk-friendly. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I think it's already been talked about a little bit with the Donut Hut at 4272 Cutella. The last week's was actually a from 7:00 to 9:00. This one's a little bit easier. It's from 7:30 to 9:30, although I know Mayor Protem Chirko prefers the 7 o'clock time because he can get out, he gets up pretty darn early for those things. Anyways, I also wanted to talk to you just on two topics real quickly. One was in light of what happened last week, technically in our city, but it was a CHP jurisdiction with the shooting that involved the homeless encampment that was by the freeway. We're going to be doing a presentation next week with our recently selected Sergeant Leav as the homeless liaison officer supervisor. And he's going to give an update regarding our homelessness within our city and the kinds of housing that's available and how we go about doing that. And so, you'll get a lot of that, next month, I'm sorry, you'll get a lot of that, the next month's presentation. And then, in my capacity as Cal Chief President, I'll be on a joint press call with the Attorney General on Friday, talking about the drug takeback. Unfortunately, because, unfortunately, I guess, is actually, our city is at the size it is, that we didn't have as much poundage necessary to kind of outweigh the risk of COVID-19 versus the folks coming out here and actually being out here to help receive the prescription drugs. So, what we're going to do is post this week where our citizens can take prescription drugs at a neighboring city that might be hosting that. But I can tell you that, that it's a serious issue, and it's about 82% increase from 2,000 drug overdoses in Orange County, and about a little over 50% of those are prescription drugs. So, it's definitely a serious issue. And I think with COVID-19, with everybody being home and people feeling the way that they do about things, it wouldn't surprise me if those numbers are much higher this year than they have been the years past. So, we'll definitely get that information out to our residents, and we'll definitely look forward to doing it next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one quick addition to that. I'm going to blame that on the chief, but I did want to say, though, you received a presentation earlier from Robert Acasa with regards to the city's COVID-19 response. I don't think that it underscores the amount of work that's gone into the city's response in this effort, in terms of reaching out to businesses in order to try to get them open as quickly as possible, the city council enacting emergency powers in order to be able to quickly move on allowing businesses to open their stores outdoors, to expanding restaurants, and those kind of regulations. So, I think that the city has done a lot in that regard. I will say, and I think credit goes to the chief for being forward-thinking on this, the idea of actually having an emergency services coordinator, it's one of those things that you don't think about until you really need. And obviously, if this year hasn't highlighted a need for that, I'd be shocked what kind of event would need to happen in order to unveil that, that need for us. So, I do want to commend the chief for taking the position of putting this, that position in place, and then also Robert Acasa for stepping into that role and obviously being able to guide us through a lot of our reopening efforts, and obviously even the guidelines for a meeting like this. So, again, thank you to the chief, and thank you, Robert, for your work so far.
Okay, on to item 11. Discussion item is Resolution Number 2020-33, opposing the modified regional housing needs allocation methodology and assessment.
Thank you, sir. The Rena numbers, and again, as you alluded to, has been something that has confounded, I think, every mayor in Orange County, every city manager, and every council member, and then community development director alike. Essentially, where this started from is that every eight years, the, the state Housing Department hands down essentially allocations of what exactly the actual housing need is in certain areas in California, and then requires local jurisdictions over an eight-year period to plan for how exactly they are going to accommodate those units being built within their cities. As just a starting point or a frame of reference, in the fifth housing cycle, which is the cycle that we currently are in, the city of Los Alamos was allocated, I'm sorry, 31 unit, or I'm sorry, 61 units, which obviously we were able to meet through an efforts through our planning division, identifying local sites that could be potentially upgraded in terms of the number of units on site, and taking into account just the local economics and development footprint here in town. As you know, the city also recently went through a general plan update where we looked at different opportunities throughout the city as to places that we could actually develop or increase capacities. This methodology has been in the works for a number of years. We're now into the sixth cycle. But there was a change when this was adopted by our local SCAG and by OCAG. Essentially, what happened was that at the last minute, there was a significant shift of the units that were going to be required within our region from one county back into Orange County. And so, essentially, what this did was double the amount of units that potentially needed to be built within Orange County, and those were then assessed to different local jurisdictions. So, just again, by frame of reference, if the normal methodology was applied to Los Alamos, being the methodology that's been used for many, many cycles, we would have a total of 267 units that we would need to account for in our planning process as the city starts its housing element. Due to this new methodology that has been adopted, we now have a total of 767 units, which obviously is a staggering increase for a city of our side that's largely built out and does not have all that much in the way of development opportunities that would allow us to build over 700 units of housing. Again, this is a mandate that's handed down from the state, does not take into account local input with regards to what exactly our planning processes are, does not take into account what exactly the realities of the ground, on the ground are with regards to our available sites, and again, doesn't take into account the controlling or confining factors that we would have to face in order to reach that number. The council wisely instructed staff to appeal these numbers, which we are in the process of doing. But I think it's reminiscent of a larger problem, is that within our region, which is six counties within our local jurisdiction, this whole region was allocated 1.3 million units of new housing that needs to be planned for over the next eight years. Recently, two different studies have come out that have shown that they believe that those numbers are overinflated by as much as half. The Fannie Mae study that came out said that the total number for all of California was 800,000. So, you can see a staggering increase when you start going to say that, well, no, we're going to allocate 1.3 million just to this sub-region. So, what the resolution before you does is, it is a, it is a statement of the issues that are in place with Rena numbers, how they were originally allocated, the allocation that was made to Los Alamos, and how it does not take into account the local factors on the ground, and more importantly, asking both SCAG and HCD to actually reevaluate the overall number and to take into account the new studies that are put in place.
Explain what form our protest will take.
Of course. So, at the SCAG level, there is something called the litigation team, which has actually been convened by the president. What this resolution would do would be to urge that group to actually take into account these new studies that have come into play, and also require us to send a letter to HCD to also encourage them to, again, reevaluate these numbers based on the new studies that have come out. It is, this in particular resolution is not directed at our particular allocation as a city. We will be addressing that through the appeals process, which will be filed later on this week. But this resolution is indicative of trying to address the larger issue, which is the original allocation just being fundamentally wrong and based on double counting, and that it needs to be addressed before we move forward with actually planning for these numbers.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do you need a roll call vote for resolution? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? We will go on to 11B. Los Alamos Measure Y Fiscal Accountability Pledge. Chet, you'd like to set this up, please?
Of course, sir. Thank you. As we have been conducting a community outreach with regards to the measure, we've been doing a significant amount of feedback gathering from local residents with regards to what exactly they are seeing and the questions that they're asking with regards to Measure Y. One of the common themes that seems to run through those questions is the question of how exactly this money will be spent. As you know, this is a general tax, and so the money would flow into the general fund, and then from there be dispersed in order to accomplish the city's goals with regards to properly funding public safety, ensuring parks are maintained, ensuring that streets are maintained, and ensuring that the city continues to operate and can provide that quality of life that Los Alamos residents have come to expect. One of the things that became very clear is that a statement that would provide further transparency with regards to what exactly the overall goals of the city council are with regards to Measure Y seem to be appropriate at this time in order to clarify what exactly the money will be going to. And so, this pledge that is before the city council today actually highlights those particular tenets of what the city council heard from the community with regards to the community outreach that was done over a year ago that has continued up until this date, and really, I think, crystallizes what exactly some of the items are that the city will look to fund going forward in the event that the measure is successful.
I'd like to kind of echo. I think this pledge helps to clarify a lot of the misunderstandings that exist. This has been confused with it's a tax, meaning it's going to be a property tax, everybody's going to be paying it. It's just gotten to be very confusing, and there are certain individuals in the community that are leading a lot of the misinformation that's out there. Currently, the city pays a, the city has a state sales tax of 7.75%. So, on those sales, where sales taxes are appropriate or are allowed, that money is collected by the merchant that's charging that tax. Whether it's a small item or a very large item, that tax is applied. And then, on a, basically either a monthly or quarterly basis, the agency or the vendor that's charging that tax has to remit that tax back to the state. The state then allocates 1% of that tax back to the city. The remainder of the tax, the 6.75%, goes to various other entities. One-half percent of it goes to the Orange County Transit Authority. That's what's referred to as Measure M. Measure M was initially approved as a 20-year sales tax measure, and then it was modified to Measure M2, which became 30 years. And so, in reality, that's a 50-year tax for a half a cent. There is a limit on how much the state or the entities that can create taxes is allowed to charge. When the city brought this up, we originally talked to residents about a 1% tax. That 1% tax would go on top of the 7.75% we have. That would raise it to 8.75%. That 1% actually comes directly back to the city. It does not go to the state. It does not go through the county. It comes directly back, much like the half percent that Orange County Transit is charging for the works that they're doing on the freeways. They're allowed to take that money and leverage it where they can actually build projects sooner, even though they don't have the money in the bank because they know the money is coming. So, they've been able to do things with the 22 freeway and currently with the 405 freeway, where they really don't have the exact amount of money needed, but they're able to borrow money based on the money coming, the anticipated money coming in. Several years ago, 2018, a number of Orange County cities passed an additional sales tax. Stanton was one. Garden Grove, I believe, was another one. Westminster was one. Seal Beach added another 1%. So, their sales tax currently is 8.75%. Because of the limit that the taxes are, when this came up after we did our initial study, I brought up to the council a consideration that maybe we should look at the additional half percent that was available. That would max out what the city could actually charge because of the state limits. And the council made the decision to go ahead and put that before the voters at 1.5%. That will raise our taxes to 9.25%. It sounds like a whole lot of money. When you get right down to it, when you purchase something, it's a penny and a half additional that will be charged on the dollar for items that you're buying. Reference has been made that on a $50,000 car, that's going to be huge. It's, if you take that cent and a half additional, it really isn't that much additional that's going on. And most people don't realize what they're paying sales tax. When we first started this, we talked about a potential of a property tax levy that would raise everybody's property tax. We talked about the potential of increasing the utility user tax. That was going to raise about $300,000 a year, way off from what we originally needed, which was about $4 million a year, $3.1 million a year, which is the, the fiscal deficit part that we have. Long Beach charges 10.25%. They got a waiver from the state. Does anybody not shop in Long Beach because they're charging 10.25%? I think most people that are buying at stores in Long Beach don't know the difference. They get the receipt, they pay it. If you go right now to buy something in Seal Beach, you're paying 8.75%. We would be a half a percent higher than that. People get over it. And the belief of the council, and everybody can weigh in, but the belief of the council was, this was then a shared situation based on sales, that it wasn't something that every person in Los Alamos was going to have to brunt. If they shop here, yes, they will. But there's a lot of people that shop in our community. We're relying on people outside the community to come in and visit our restaurants, to visit other areas, and we're relying on them to help us from the standpoint of the sales tax. It was the most efficient way to go about doing it. We are not taking that money and putting it in any type of a special fund. It goes into the general fund. There's been references in publications that the council of the future can use that money any way they want. That's probably true. That's why when you elect a council person, you need to figure out what that council person is about, and what their goals and objectives are, the things that they want to do. That's why we're elected, is to make the decisions. Where we're faced with at this particular point is if that measure does not pass, we have already cut a number of positions and reduced staffing. We're going to need to cut more. That means police. Police is more than 50% of our budget. And people are saying, well, how do we know that the city council is going to apply that money to where it's needed? That's why you elect us. That's why there's a recall process if you don't think we're doing the job that we're supposed to do. I think we need to continue to improve our transparency and our communications. I know this council... I know this council has worked diligently, for the time that I've been on it, to make the right decisions, to try and bring the money in that needs to come in to operate the city. There are other areas where money is available. And I've had those discussions with the city manager. They're not something that we can do immediately, but there are other ways that we can bring in revenue to the city. And we're going to explore those. We're going to continue to look. Going to continue to do the things that need to be done. You need to look at this tax carefully and say, do I, am I happy with what I'm getting right now in the community? Are we getting the parks nor recreation programs or the things that need to be done being done? And for the most part, that's true. We're having financial issues. We've noticed that to the community over the last two or three years as we've made budget adjustments. So this transparency statement helps to clarify that. I have absolutely no problem. I did not sign, I voted to put it on the ballot so that the voters would make a decision. I did not sign the statement that was in the voter's pamphlet for a specific reason. And that was is that as a conservative, I don't like taxes. I don't think any of us here do. But on a principle, I opted not to sign that. Do I support this measure? I support the voters looking through and making a decision on their own whether or not this is the right way to go. I have already voted, and I did vote in favor of the measure. So everybody needs to look at it from their own standpoint. The amount of rhetoric that's going on in social media about things, there are signs that are being posted, vote no on Los Al taxes. People don't know what in the world that's about. That's not an organized campaign. It's one of those things that some residents have put together, and they're out trying to confuse everybody. I'm not saying that what we're trying to do is right or what they're trying to do is right. Each individual person needs to make that decision when they cast their ballot. And please, make sure that you're counted. There's a lot of people over the past sequences of elections that don't go to the polls. I'm in a district this time that has roughly 1,300 voters. I get materials from the registrar voter's office that tell me a large number of those people in the last five elections have never voted. They're registered to vote, but they don't vote. I can't answer that question. They're already registered. It isn't a matter that they can't register for one reason or another. They're registered. They just don't take the time to go do that. Is it important to you, when you dial 911, that you get a police officer at your door or you get the fire department to come out? If it is, you need to research this and make a decision. I'll stop there and let my other colleagues weigh in, but
Thank you.
This is another transparency attempt. And we're going to continue, as long as I'm on the council, continue to try and make facts available to people so that they know what they're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very grateful for the transparency measure. I'm mostly grateful because our city doesn't just hear rumblings and hear things happening and ignore them or think that they'll go away on their own. They actually hit it head on. So I'm very grateful for that. I'm glad that our executive team started hearing things. It was like, you know what? No, we don't have anything to hide. That's the point of transparency. And I will keep my Measure Y pitch. It's real, for me, it's very simple. Because like councilmember Gross said, nobody likes taxes. I mean, that's a no-brainer. But this tax, you either give it to your city or you give it to your state. And that's the bottom line. It's not a matter of, well, if I don't apply, if I don't approve Measure Y, I get to keep my 0.5%. No. Because OCTA can get it, AQMD can get it, or any other list of acronyms from the county to the state level can come and take that 0.5%. So I'm a very possessive woman. I'm going to give it to my city. I think my state has enough.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate a little bit more, you know, like we've all said, nobody likes taxes. The max for us to be at is 9.25%. For LA County, it's 10.25% for special legislation. Somebody's going to grab that money. This is a chance for the voters to say, we understand we're going to be taxed by somebody. At least this is a reinvestment back into our community. We can account for every dollar. The state's hemorrhaging money right now because of COVID and other mismanagement or spending deficits or whatever you want to call it. They're going to grab whatever's out there. And if that means going to every city that's not at their max and taking that extra, I wouldn't be surprised if that happens. Not necessarily by a vote, but maybe by an executive order under the guise of COVID. We just don't know what's going to happen. So this is the only way that we can lock up any kind of reinvestment money back into the community. They've taken pretty much everything else away from us. So a penny and a half is a small price to pay. It does not affect your groceries. Groceries are not applicable to sales tax, any kind of services or anything. It is spread, you know, among residents and also visitors. We have a lot of employees here that don't live here, but they do shopping here, and they will also pay into that. And it was just the easiest way that we could find, well, actually, the only way that we could really find to solve our deficit and to really lock up any additional taxes. At least they're going to come back to us. Our residents keep us very transparent. If we spend too much, we hear from them quickly. So, and this will be the same case with this. You know, my whole thing is, you know, I came on to city council to guarantee that my future grandchildren would live here. This is one of those reinvestments that guarantee that they will hopefully live here one day. So I am in full support of it. I don't like taxes, but at least if I get to tell the government where my taxes are going to go, I feel a little bit better.
Thank you.
For me, it's simple, you know? Do you like Los Alamos the way it is right now? Do you want it to stay the way that it is right now? If we don't pass Measure Y, and this isn't a scare tactic, I mean, this is facts. We've gone through the budgeting process. We've gone through the charts, the projections, the numbers over the last two years, all in public meetings. And if Measure Y doesn't pass, we're going to be in the red next year, $1.6 million. We're going to be out of working capital in the next two years. That means we will not have enough money to pay our bills. So, you know, think about that. If you're in a household and you run out of money to pay your bills, what do you start doing then? If you are able, you start cutting what you're spending. You start cutting your bills. And we're going to have to do that. And, you know, I understand folks don't like taxes. This is a cent and a half that we're going to pay one way or another. Do we want the money to stay here, keep our streets safe, keep our streets nice, our trees trimmed, our sense of community? Or do we want it to go to AQMD or the county or the state? From my perspective, I think it would be foolish for us to not grab this before somebody else grabs this money in terms of using it for our community and for our community's safety. Now, councilmember Gross made a good point. You know, people are saying, this goes into the general fund. How do we, how do we know what you're going to spend it on? Every year, we go through a lengthy budgeting process. Every budget for the last at least 11 years is on the city website. I encourage any resident who has any question about the budgets, now, next year, in 10 years from now, you know, contact your council members, come to the meetings. As you can imagine, not a lot of people come to the budget meetings. You would have a very loud voice at those budget meetings if you think the money is being spent in an unwise way. Again, this is a very small city. If you don't like what your council is spending money on, vote, vote us out. Run yourself. You'll find no easier city in Los Alamos or in Orange County to get on a city council. We're very small. You have a loud voice here. The Standing Budget Committee, that was councilmember Hasselbrink and I, we went through over the last two years more than 30 options to try to avoid, not imposing, but putting up this sales tax measure before the voters. This is not an action we as a council took lightly. More than 30 options. They either did not raise enough money. They, you know, they, mostly they didn't raise enough money, and they were not viable for other reasons. They didn't cut enough costs or raise enough money. This is the only option that preserves things in Los Alamos the way that they are, with minimal impact. Let me see what other comments I had. So one of the things that is being said, you know, in social media posts, and I'm with councilmember Gross, that there's a lot of disinformation out there. One of the things that's being said is, you know, this money's not going to be spent on public safety. That's just a scare tactic by the city council. And it's absolutely not just a scare tactic by the city council. More than 50% of our budget goes towards public safety. And, you know, if we're forced to cut 1.6 million next year and a couple of million the year after that, I'm sorry, but that's going to affect our police department. We hate to say that, but it's just the truth. So, you know, it's a fair warning to the residents that public safety absolutely will be impacted. It's been impacted this year. It was impacted last year. We're not funding four police officer positions this year. And, you know, our thanks to the chief, he's been working with the city council and staff to try to help us close budget gaps year after year, even though it means his department is understaffed and his police officers are at times overworked. So we really do appreciate that. Chief Nunez. We've got this spending pledge that we've got here to ensure that if voters approve Measure Y, the funding will go towards public safety services. It'll go towards the local economy, senior and youth programs, streets and sidewalk maintenance, and more of the services the community cares about. You know, a lot is being made of the fact that the money goes into the general fund. Every other city that enacts a sales tax does it in the same way, and it goes into the general fund. And city manager Simmons, can you explain why that is? I mean, it's a practical reason.
Yes, sir, and thank you. The reason that this money goes into the general fund, basically from the adoption, is that in order to put a measure before the public for them to vote on, you take two routes. One is a general tax, which can be applied to all essential services, public safety, general operations, and so forth. And then you have another, which is a dedicated tax, which would go to a specific item or line item. The difference between the two is that a general item is a 50% plus one voter threshold, whereas a special tax is a 2/3 threshold. And as you alluded to, all of the cities around us that have currently enacted sales tax have done it by going down this general route.
Thank you. So one of the other things that I've seen on social media, which is completely inaccurate, is that the city has not done enough to try to live within its means and that there's other options other than Measure Y. But the truth is, the city's been cutting year after year for more than a decade. We've cut city staff, I think, is it 75 down to 50 employees? City manager?
Right. You have, in the, over the past 10 years, the city has cut 26 full-time staff positions. That equates to 1/3 of the staff over that 10-year period. And then in this last budget cycle, on top of that 1/3, has also eliminated the equivalent of 19 full-time positions, including four police officer positions.
Okay. Thank you. So, you know, the city has been making cuts year after year after year. And fortunately, we've been able to do this in a way that does not drastically affect our residents. However, we're at a point where that's just not going to be possible anymore. This measure's the only option that solves the problem and is sustainable. And all of this has been shared. I mean, this is two years. This is not new information that we're springing on the community. We wouldn't do that. This is all information that's been shared with the community. We had community outreach meetings last year. We've had budget meetings for the last two years and city council meetings for the last at least two years where we've talked about these issues. With that, I think I'll give the mayor a chance to speak.
Thank you. When you go last, you're always repeating everybody else. So at that, at the risk of that, this is a important enough election that I will repeat a few items. And as Councilwoman Hasselbrink said, you know, there's a fear that the state is just going to by mandate, by actually almost like fiat, grab, raise the sales taxes under the guise of COVID. Now, a lot of you are saying, oh, there's no way that can happen. I own apartment buildings for a living and manage apartment buildings. The state has given away my rent. I don't know how it's legal, how they did it, but some unauthorized group that runs the scheduling of the Supreme Court of the state of California decided that people really don't have to pay the rent if they're being affected by COVID. And if you're breathing, you're being affected by COVID. So it's a pretty liberal statute. It's also been mentioned that some of the mentioning of cutting police and cutting other things are scare tactics. You know, a fifth grader could figure out what words are important here. They're going to get people's attention. It didn't take a city survey to figure that out. We all knew what the problems were. The state mandates have just kept piling up. We've done a better job than most of the other cities who had to dip in for the sales tax four or even two years ago. Makes me feel that we've done the cuts Mark talked about and Chet talked about, you know, going from 75 to 50, and then in the face of the pandemic, cutting another 19. There is nothing really left to cut that we're not going to start seeing the immediate impact. I mean, you know, in this city, if somebody breaks into two cars, we hear about it. We're going to look at much worse than that if we can't afford to keep the police department we have now. Chief, you're doing a phenomenal job with the open positions and keeping the city covered. Thank you very much. Eight years ago, I was elected. I ran for election with the idea that being a lifelong CPA, I could, I could help to see what their financial matters. I made the following promises. I promised not to take any campaign contributions. I promised to spend the city's money with the same care as I spend my own. And my wife will tell you I'm cheap. And I'd like to think for the most part, I've kept those promises. In the last eight years, as we talked about, employees have been cut. Really, from now, if you look at the big picture, they've gone from 75 to 31, which is a dramatic increase. We have the most phenomenal staff that is doing two and three jobs apiece and keeping the city going. Our city salaries are among the lowest in the county in every major position in our city. City manager, police chief, all those are at least 25% below the county average. Most importantly, I promised you I'd tell you the truth no matter how ugly. I'd like to think that over the years, I have demonstrated the ability to sift through the fluff and boil each issue down to the basics. So let's get down to the basics of Measure Y. To paraphrase Bill Clinton, why, why? And the answer is, without a doubt, we cannot continue on the fiscal road we're on. We are going to, we are at a fork in the road. The only question for the voters is which way are we going? And that's pretty much a simple choice. I won't repeat all the negatives, all the negative things that we'll need to do if Measure Y fails, but we'll remind you that the things that make up public safety, including the police department, but also public works and keeping our children both safe and busy, make up over 75% of our budget. So if you work a vote against a measure, you know where the cuts will come from. There's only so many places we spend money on the city. I agree with Councilwoman Hasselbrink again that her goal, that we want to be the place where your grandchildren come to settle down. I think we can all agree that Los Al is a great place to live. This year, because of the pandemic, we've had a small glimpse of what life is like without the race on the base, an open Fourth of July celebration, winter wonderland, and many other events, classes, and gatherings that make us a community. This is why after a year-long analysis of our finances, we are recommending that a sales tax increase is the best solution. I ask you to join me in voting yes on Y. And for a few, for a couple hundred dollars per family, let's keep Los Al the special place we all love. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal accountability pledge as a guide to helping the Los Alamos community maintain the quality of life.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Number 12, adjourned. Thank you all. Good to see everybody again. Thank you.